I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you call roll, please?
DeYoung.
Here.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Strayland.
Here.
And Frank O'Leary, this is Max.
All right, the city council has adopted Dakota Civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively in speaking up to address incivility. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast from Pella TV, so anyone who wishes to speak to council, please approach the podium before speaking, so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on camera. Before we get started tonight, I just want to congratulate the cross-country teams from this community. We again had all four teams placed at least in the top 10. Pella Christian Pella, Pella Girls won their fourth state championship. Marissa Farabee won her third straight state champ-- say, straight state champion. That's tough. Won her third in a row. And like I said, all the other teams finished in the top 10, so quite a fall. Got a lot of runners in this town, so dynasties are big built, so always-- I'm a kind of a sports guy, but I'm always excited about our sports teams. In fact, 6:30, the volleyball team's playing the state championship, so if you see any, check in my phone. All right, we'll get started. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So hold.
Support.
Dan Strayland, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to appoint Dan Zaustra to the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Committee. This committee was formed to establish a future grant program using LMI funds the city will receive in the future. Can I get a motion for approval?
Work.
Hopkins, Dan Strayland, any discussion? Lynn is heading up this committee, and she had requested that we add Dan, because he's had some, I think he's had some experience where he lived in Indiana with this type of a deal, so I think he'll be a big asset for the group. All right, so all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward, the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Dorard and members of the city council. My name is Courtney Grandia, address 625 Countryside Lane, and I'm here with my husband, Jeff Jones. We are the owners of Kojo Ventures, and we're honored to be here tonight as soon-to-be owners of Tamri Hall. We want to begin by sincerely thanking you for considering our liquor application this evening. Your approval will represent a critical and very welcoming step as we move toward officially closing on December 1st and booking events into the new year. Tamri Hall already holds a very special place in our hearts. It's where Jeff and I celebrated our own wedding, so this truly feels like a full-circle moment. We also want to take a quick moment to recognize Amanda and Spencer Carlstone for the incredible care, creativity, and energy that they poured into Tamri Hall over the past five years. They've built something truly beautiful, not just a venue, but a cornerstone, a palace downtown, and a gathering place for so many meaningful moments. Our goal is to honor that legacy while also investing in its future, maintaining Tamri's reputation for excellence, expanding its reach within the community, and ensuring it continues to be a place where people come together to celebrate life's most meaningful occasions. We're committed to being responsible stewards of this space and to building strong partnerships with the local vendors, organizations, and residents. Thank you again for welcoming us into this next chapter and your trust and partnership.
Thank you and congratulations. Anyone else?
I'm Harry Early. I live on Countryside Lane, also 725. Congratulations. I have two comments to present to the council. The first is on item H1, the refuse ordinance change. I wasn't here at your last meeting. I was watching from home because of family responsibilities. But the concern I have, and I've been actually administrator of a refuse franchise program previously, I haven't used this program yet, but I would like to. And it seems a concern that we're just going to cancel a service that's been used by 50, 100 maybe customers in the city for a number of years. And I haven't seen any public notice. I haven't seen any discussion of it outside of the last general discussion that the council had. I can understand from a billing standpoint, because I administered a couple of utilities, that there is some effort or work to this, but that's part of utility administration, is to manage the accounts and operate things. And I've been very satisfied with the service, so it's not a criticism of that. But I think that public information should be out there. I think that customers that would be impacted by a cancellation should have an opportunity to know that it's going to happen. It has been in the paper that I've known. And I just would ask you to possibly continue this item to the next meeting and allow some of the information to be gotten out to the community and to the customers. There might also be one other small item in that ordinance that might need to be corrected, but I don't want to go into that kind of detail. If you're going to move forward with it, that's fine. Any questions? Okay. The second just comment is on the consent calendar D4 and 5. Those are the annual reports on the urban renewal projects or programs and the TIF. And staff was good enough a couple of months ago to actually give me last year's reports. I've analyzed those a little bit from past experience. And my comment is, this is a growing interest of the council. It's a growing part of our budget, and I think that it needs to be better understood with the short and long-term impacts of especially the TIF program are on the revenues for the city. Not necessarily a negative thing, but to just better understand where you're going. And I know staff intends to come back with some ideas on more urban plans. And in the context of that, I would just encourage you to consider having maybe a workshop to focus on this, because it's going to be a big, it's already a big number. And I think with property tax being possibly limited in a different way, et cetera, it's going to be important to look at it comprehensively. Those are my two inputs. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So hold.
Support.
Dan Strayland, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung Strayland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a public hearing on the proposed Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Plan. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Tonight's presentation is actually for items E1B, E1C on the agenda. For those in attendance and those watching at home on the telephile, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board. As Mayor Dorard stated, we'll have tonight as a public hearing on a proposed urban renewal plan. And this area that's commonly referred to, or the urban renewal plan we're discussing this evening, rather, is the Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Plan. Overall, the purpose of this urban renewal plan is to provide additional housing for the community. This is a subdivision that we are talking about, a 47-lot residential subdivision. Now, as council is well aware, anytime you talk about economic development in the city, usually with housing developments, there's a significant cost to public infrastructure. The very first step in the economic development process is to establish an urban renewal plan. That's what this proposed resolution would do. And really, when we look at, if we have a map of Fountain Hills, the urban renewal area that we're considering is the northern limits of Fountain Hills up here, so it's this yellow highlighted area that we have right here. Let's go ahead, please, Heidi. It is important to note from the legislative process, prior to adoption of the urban renewal plan, we are required to hold a consultation with both the taxing entities that would be affected, impacted by the urban renewal plan, that is, the Pella Community School District, as well as Marion County. With that, we held the consultation on October 14th. We did not receive any comments on this. Now, as of course, when you consider an urban renewal plan, one of the main items that we have on this is a line of the city's comprehensive plan. This plan was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 27th and was approved unanimously as well. And staff is also in the opinion that the plan is a form of the city's comprehensive plan as well. So Heidi, let's go ahead, please. Okay. Now, one item that we do have up here as far as an extension agreement, the plan, cities have the ability for housing developments to create urban renewal plans that are subject to a 10-year life. If there's an extension agreement, both with Marion County and the Pella Community School Districts that can be extended down to 15 years. It's our understanding that both entities will be considering this during the November meetings as well. So in summary, Mr. Mayor, what we have this evening is Resolution 6956 would adopt Fountain Hills Urban Renewal Plan, and ordinance number 1079 would allow for the collection of tax increment financing revenues. What that simply does, if we go back to slide 4, please. There we go. On the map, the third, the renewal plan and the ordinance that we have with this. Ultimately, with the ordinance, what we're looking to do is if you're to drive out there right now, it's bare ground on there, and so all entities would receive, continue to receive, the base value of it. What we're looking to do is capture the incremental property values with the ordinance as well. With that, in the purpose of capturing incremental property valuations or tax valuations from this, a portion of those valuations would be rebated back to the developer, opposed to be rebated back to the developer, cover the cost of the public infrastructure for the development, which is roughly $2.4 million. There's more to come on that during what we're considering in a development agreement this evening for this development as well. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Council comments? Any comment from a member of the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So hold.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6956 entitled Resolution Determining An Area The City Be Economic Development Area That The Rehabilitation, Conservation, Redevelopment, Development, Or A Combination thereof Of Such Areas Necessary In The Interest Of The Public Health, Safety, Or Welfare Of The Residents Of The City Designating Such Areas Appropriate For Urban Renewal Projects And Adopting The Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Plan. Can I get a motion for approval?
So hold.
Carlstone, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 101079 entitled An Ordinance Providing That General Property Tax Leaded And Collected Each Year On All Property Located Within Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Area In City Of Pella County Of Marion State Of Iowa. Buying For The Benefit Of The State Of Iowa City Of Pella County Of Marion, Pella Community School District And Other Taxing Districts Be Paid To A Special Fund For Payment Of Principal And Interest On Loans, Monies Advanced To An Indebtedness, Including Bonds Issued Or To Be Issued Incurred By The City In Connection With The Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Area, The Fountain Hills 4 Urban Renewal Plan. This is the first reading. Can I get a motion for approval?
So hold.
Support.
Carlstone, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Larry E. DeBrice and Rosemary DeBrice. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. As Mayor Dorard stated, what this resolution would do is approve a development agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Larry DeBrice for Fountain Hills 4 Development. This is the same development, which we just approved, the Urban Renewal Plan 4, it's a 47-lot, single-family housing development. And we do have a picture of the subdivision plan up on the big board as well. Now, a little bit of side notes on this. When we talked about housing needs within the community recently, Marion County had a housing assessment for the county as a whole, the Pella Submarket identified additional 1,270 houses that are needed to meet demand through the year 2035. The reason why that's significant is when we talk about the need for housing, we believe there's a significant need for additional housing within the community. The latest plan, or the current plan, that we had identified housing as a strategic priority of the city. Staff continues to believe that it is a strategic priority of the city and is also a need of the city as well. So once again, what this resolution would do is approve a 47-lot development agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Larry DeBrice. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. On the crafts of the development, what we'd like to explain is with the development agreement, what developers obligated to do is to build all the public infrastructure for the development. Once they've built all the infrastructure for the development, then they are also required to dedicate that infrastructure at no charge to the city of Pella. The estimated cost of the public infrastructure hands $2.4 million. Now, when we talk about tax increment financing, if you recall during the urban renewal plan, we talked about establishing an area and capturing incremental property tax valuations. All of that. If you're to drive out there right now, there is no additional housing on this. So what the theory is with this is if the houses are built, a portion of those property taxes would be rebated back to the developer to provide, to reimburse them for the cost of public infrastructure. So if we were to look at the life of the urban renewal plan, if there's no houses built down there, the city does not collect any property taxes on it, then we wouldn't rebate back anything to the developer. Likewise, if you look over the life of the urban renewal plan, if the developer fully builds out, the developer could be reimbursed $2.4 million on this, which is the cost of the public infrastructure, but that would be over a number of years. Now, one of the areas that we have, if you recall, we've always traditionally proposed extension plans on this, going from a 10-year urban renewal plan up to 15-year urban renewal plan. The reason for that is the Iowa law requires us to set aside a certain portion of the tax increments that are going to be collected over the next 10 to 15 years and dedicate them towards low and moderate income housing in Pella. So what the Iowa law basically says is if you rebate the developer $2.4 million, you have to generate an additional $800,000 for low and moderate income housing. So with that, what we anticipate is if the developer, if the developer fully builds out and if the developer is reimbursed for the cost of public infrastructure, the city will have right around $200, just over a little over $800, $8,000 dedicated that we're going to be required to use for low and moderate income housing within the community as well. So again, we want to emphasize that the developer, most of the risk is on the developer. In this matter, they're required to build the infrastructure and dedicate it to the city of Pella. We're only required to rebate back to the developer if we collect property taxes within the developer, over the next 10 to 15 years. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Okay, that's it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. We would have any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments? Mandy?
No written comments.
Council comments? Any member of the audience have a comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6957 entitled Resolution Approving And Authorizing Execution Of A Development Agreement Buying Between The City Of Pella And Larry E. DeBrice And Rosemary DeBrice. Can I have a motion for approval?
So hold.
Support.
Dan Strayland, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a new Class C retail alcohol license for Kojo Ventures LLC, doing businesses Tamri Hall. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. And once again, as Mayor Dorard stated, we have a liquor license, a Class C alcohol license for Kojo Ventures. That would become effective on December 1st if council were to approve this application this evening. What it is important to note, applications listed online with the state of Iowa, and staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I might have said Koho, it's probably Kojo. But I was just in a Latin American country, so they don't use the J sound. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Upstate.
DeYoung. Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6958 entitled Resolution Approving Consulting Services Agreement With Greenwood Consulting For A Stormwater Management Program Initial Study. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Dorard stated, what this resolution would do is approve a consulting agreement with Greenwood Consulting for an evaluation of the city's storm management system, stormwater management system that we have. Now, it is important to note that we discussed this over this proposed agreement on October 7th, and what we've taken is to direct, what council directed us to do is to place this on item 1 for formal consideration. Now, a little bit of overview, when we talk about stormwater management and potential stormwater improvements, the very first thing that we need to have a handle on is an evaluation of the current system. Specifically, when you look through the scope of the services with this, what we're going to do with this agreement through this evaluation is identify what we call the pinch points in the system. In other words, where are the problems within the city's stormwater system? Once we identify the problems, we'll be able to articulate the cost of those and actually come up with funding strategies as well. The very first step is a strategy, is the evaluation of the system itself. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Now, we do have a description of the scope of the services that the consultant would be performing for the city of Pella. Now, as far as the fees for this agreement, it just totals over a little over $40,000. And if council were to approve this resolution, we should have a report before May 1st of next year. Now, with this, as Mr. Greenwood Consulting, that we spearheaded by Mr. Bob Beanster, is very familiar with the city's stormwater system, and we believe that they have the knowledge and expertise to perform the work as well. We also believe that the fees are reasonable, given the complexity of the evaluation Mr. Beanster is going to be performing for the city of Pella. And finally, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of this agreement proceeding.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Support. Carlstone, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6959 entitled Resolution Pella City Council Approving Final Plaid Of Prairie Ridge West, Platte One, Pella, Iowa. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site of this. As Mayor Dorard stated, what we're considering this evening is the final plaid for the Prairie Ridge West, and this is just shot at 39 acres, just to orientate. This one, Washington Street is located right down here and transitions over to G28. The area that we're looking at is this yellow highlighted area up here on the big board as well. Overall, what the developers opposing is a 90-lot, 90-lot residential subdivision. It's important to note, the city council did approve the preliminary plaid on September of 2024. Let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Now, as far as zoning with this, and also as far as compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance, it's important to note that we believe the proposed final plaid, which we have pictured up on the big board, aligns with this, are actually in accordance with the city zoning code as well as our subdivision ordinance. The planning and zoning commission made the same finding when they reviewed the final plaid on during the July 28, during the July 2025 meeting as well. Well, let's go ahead, please, Heidi. We'd like to mention with this plaid that it will be leading to public improvements, which we are not accepting any of the public improvements this evening. Developers opposing a performance bond for the completed public improvements that the developer still has to construct on this. The bond was reviewed by the city attorney, and as well, we are recommending approval this evening of the final plaid as well as the bonds for the development. Now, as far as the resolutions that we are considering this evening, those are items G2 and G3 on tonight's agenda. Resolution 6959 approves the final plaid. And Resolution number 6960 excessive off-site easement. Now, what the off-site easement is, right at the entrance of the road, there's a public utility easement that's located just outside of the public, right away from the developers opposing what this development is about, a 10-foot easement outside of that. That is what the off-site public easement is. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So hold.
Support.
Dan Strayland, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6960 entitled Resolution Approving And Accepting Off-Site Easement Related To Prairie Ridge West, Platte One, Pella, Iowa. Can I get a motion for approval?
So hold.
Support.
Carlstone.
Yeah.
Hopkins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1080 entitled An Ordinance Amending Solid Waste Fees In The City Of Pella, Iowa. This is the first reading. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Dorard stated, what this resolution would do is approve, it eliminates the minimum rate for our solid waste utility currently. Residents have the ability to suspend service and pay roughly $2, or pay $2.50 a month while the service is suspended, typically called the snowbirds rate. This ordinance was discussed with the city council on October 21st. The staff was directed to present this ordinance for formal consideration this evening. We have had some issues with the vacation rate on this that we discussed on October 21st as well. And this is the reason why the city staff is recommending eliminating of the program is due to the past issues that we've had in administering the program on it. So with this, again, what we would be doing is eliminating the ability to be on, have a vacation rate as well, and pay $2.50 a month for solid waste collection. And Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I have a motion for approval? Some of those. I've worked. Carlstone, any discussion? Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Post no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dean Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number ten eighty-one entitled in ordinance amending municipal telecommunication utility rates in the city of Pella, Iowa. This is the first reading. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Once again, this is a continuation of the ordinance that was originally discussed on policy and planning on October twenty-first. This ordinance has two components. The first ordinance is eliminating the vacation rate for Pella fiber and our three services, that would be internet, phone, telephone service, as well as cable television service, where the customer can pay ten dollars per month for the service. Similar issues that we've had with the solid waste utility that we discussed on October twenty-first. So, let's go ahead, please. Heidi? Now, as far as amendment number two, we really consider this more housekeeping item, and that's just an amendment to our phone line, our cloud-based phone lines that we have listed up here on the big board as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, council, rather staff is recommending approval of proposed ordinance this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Carlstone, Hopkins, any discussion?
Is the proposed rate, it's lower than the current rate?
There actually, it's down. The proposed rate is less than the current rate.
Yeah. So, a lot of it lower than that.
It's market competitiveness, is my understanding.
Is there any thought to Mr. Erle's comments about putting this out over public information or that?
We certainly can for the council if you desire to do that as well. So.
I think we should give some info on how good this, it's a big difference between vacation rate and regular rate.
I think Mr. Doi.
Counsel, nobody's paying that rate today. That's a rate for a cloud-based phone service that we're rolling out. Nobody has signed up for that without it. So, there was an error in the typing there. We got the wrong rate on it. Had that confused with regular pop's plain old telephone service rates? This is for a cloud-based phone that you got sitting on your desk that works all off the internet. It's a product that we haven't rolled out yet, but we just had the wrong rate on it.
Mr. Erle, a little more concerned about the vacation rate?
For the waste, yeah.
They also have three readings, correct?
Yeah. That ordinance can't be adopted till we have three readings, either of these. So, this, this is, I think, is just a clean, housekeeping cleanup because there was some rate. It was wrong in the original ordinance, so we're just fixing it. This one is, as Doi said, no one is in this, so it's meaningless yet until we get customers using it.
But back to the vacation rate issue, is that on internet, we're talking about the internet.
Internet, internet cable television and also phone services as well.
So, instead of saying, I think I pay seventy dollars a month, if I'm on a vacation for two months, I can pay ten dollars a month.
Yes.
But I know there's a suggestion that they sign up and say, I've been gone for two months. Then you just suspend for two months, and at the end of the beginning of the third month, you would go back to regular. But there are now, I mean, there's different ways to handle the thing, so.
I think staff's concern with it was the administration on the vacation rate as well for both services. And we've had, unfortunately, there's been a few incidents where we've had some issues with it on both sides, Pella fiber included with solid waste utility as well.
It's a little more time for a little more comments to come on this.
Yes, sir.
All right. I think we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion on the floor? All in favor, please say yes. Post no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dean Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Castles, I would move that we set aside the rules and wait until the readings.
Okay. Dean Strickland and Hopkins?
Is that on both of these ordinances?
No, just this one. Just this one. Okay. So, we have a motion made and seconded to waive the second, third readings on this ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Post no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dean Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
No.
Butler?
No.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion did not pass. Moving on, can I get a motion for approval of the abstract of Bill number twenty-one eighty-six? Butler?
Yeah.
Hopkins, any discussion, questions? Okay. All in favor, please say yes. Post no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dean Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening? If so, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn to policy and planning to discuss, have a discussion regarding proposed camping ordinance. Mike?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this discussion that we have this evening is regulating the storage of personal property in public spaces within the city. Now, this was a concern that was brought to city staff by an elected official as well. And specifically, what we have a concern with is when people rent park shelters or reserve public spaces, there could be someone storing their own personal belongings at the city. That's a temporary living space. Most likely in our parks, of course, where it's occurred mostly within the city. So, what this ordinance would do would regulate the ability to store personal items, personal property within public spaces within our community. So, let's go ahead, please. Heidi? Now, specifically, what this ordinance does prohibits camping and storage of personal property in falling places, any park, any publicly owned property which is not ordinarily allowed access. This includes buildings, water storage tanks, oil sites, stormwater ponds, streets, sidewalks, driveways, and any publicly owned parking lot or property, including public buildings as well with this. So, Heidi, let's go ahead, please. Now, we do have the reasons why that we have the proposed ordinance for consideration this evening, but it's a general health and welfare concerns. It was expressed to city staff. Now, it is important to note that city staff worked with the city attorney's office in crafting this proposed ordinance that we have that we're considering this evening. Now, as far as the violations, if you're in violation of the proposed ordinance, it would be deemed as a trespass and enforceable as a simple misdemeanor on this as well. And finally, and going only this, if council would like to proceed with formal consideration of the ordinance this evening, staff would recommend that we actually send this to the Pella Community School District for review since it includes public buildings and public property as well, and get their comments before formal consideration of the ordinance. So, Chief McShady, I know that you, you've worked together on this ordinance, and if there's anything that I missed or any other points you'd like to bring up, you feel free to share with council.
Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
How big a problem is this? How big a problem has this been?
Well, it was mostly, so obviously we're fortunate enough to have this issue come up very often. And when we do, my staff is pretty good in putting the puzzle pieces together and getting services. We're running into some difficulty sometimes with a few of our folks here is, you know, when you choose that nomadic lifestyle, they don't, they don't want any help. And so, that sometimes can conflict with somebody used to, we have our shelters and parks where families have reserved the space and now have to share it with the same person who's sleeping in it for the last couple of days. So, we're normally pretty good at fixing those problems, but at the end of the day, you know, we should have some enforcement teeth if we do.
So, there is no, nothing to do about it that at this point, if somebody's sleeping in their shelter house on a regular basis, we have no?
Our city ordinance closes parks at a certain time, and so, we were able to, you know, use that to remove them from that area, but it does nothing for the daytime. And so, it's just a matter of moving them from one place to another. Again, kind of last resort for us, but if we need it, it's nice to have that.
And this isn't things like a hammock set up in a park. This is something overnight, so.
Correct. Yes.
So, we just will name it, this refers to homeless?
Sir?
This refers to homeless people?
Well, I don't know that it designates if solely has a homeless situation, but it normally does revolve around there. But again, you know, there are those who choose to have that nomadic lifestyle, and so. Overlooking, we don't have a huge issue with this.
So, just to clarify this discussion with the school. School has their own property. They, can they regulate their own property? And this puts them under this ordinance, or I guess I'm a little confused about that.
Mr. Mayor, since this ordinance regulates public property, public buildings, yeah, it involves the Pella Community School District as well.
Just curious what happens when, I think I know what we're talking about, they often come over to where my business is located. It's private property, but that's not forcible by city, at least, is it?
Yeah, those are normally complaint based.
Yeah. So, this doesn't address the homeless, the homeless person in town, or maybe it just gives them some move to enforce a part.
Okay. It's a consensus. We'd like to see a formal ordinance proposal?
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for tonight?
I have just two updates. We do have future council items listed up on the big board. And Mr. Mayor, I would like to also mention that we have our new public works director in attendance, Mr. Wolf Nixon. Wolf, if you can stand, council. So, I'd like to welcome Wolf. The city's been on the job for about one week, so.
Good license, be here. Thank you very much for putting your faith entrusted with people to work with you.
You're welcome, Wolf. Glad to have you aboard. It's a big job. We needed somebody there, so thanks for taking the job and getting to work. Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Hopkins, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes. Post no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dean Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. We are.